Yeah, I used to live in that town. No, I don't know. Surprise I didn't hear that. I don't like envelopes.
Oh, man. I love it's got your name on it.
Okay. My first ever board meeting had an anonymous letter. So this is just a tax exempt thing, what, in case I...
Huh?
I'm out on, uh...
I haven't gotten any info on...
The Nisbitt Conference is virtual, so I don't know that we're gonna have any expenses.
No, for work. I haven't gotten anything on the...
They don't have to sign into it. It's not mandatory for them.
I'm sure I'll get a notice.
Mandatory for... Part of the... Uh, we're trying to figure out, like, between teachers' teaching assistants, like, 860. And so I was talking to John about a format that may get enough representation and meet the needs.
Do it automatically?
But you're not gonna be able to do that.
I think we set you up last time where it's on the one that just, like at home, when you just walk in, it just...
Um, I'm gonna do that. I'm going to do that from here. Um, and people will be in their buildings.
I'm tired.
But I'll project whatever...
The work has just been nuts. You know, they keep changing the plans and that money finally ended, so we're all coming back. It kind of just pushed everything into overdrive, so...
They have had positive tests.
We had some first, but not nearly as many as I thought. And now that we've kind of got...
I'm not upset about that. Need to take a few of those voters out.
That's just my opinion, sorry.
For me, I'm definitely going to wear it because...
Are you recording already?
There'll be people that might say something.
I'm gonna pull this down. I've tried everything.
Oh, dear. Hey, I'll just bang the gavel, call the meeting, I want to know if the board in which case, please rise for the pledge. Okay, welcome. We'll begin with a moment of silence. Today, we have a moment of silence for Stuart Throop, a graduate of the North Syracuse. Thank you. And just a reminder to board members that in order to be picked up by the recording, if you have a question or a comment, make sure you speak right into the microphone, because we had some issues last time. So today, we start with the North Syracuse Central School District reentry plan and Mr. Bowles.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to present the latest work on the district. As you know, the governor had us put in our reopening plans as of July 31st. We did meet that deadline, and as of right now, we are up to date with all documents from... For the New York State Education Department and Department of Health. So I do want to let you know that this has not been done in a vacuum. We've had collaboration of five subcommittees since May working on our reopening and also gathering information from the community survey. The data has provided us with great information that we've used throughout this process. We've also sat down with our district steering committee that helps us as we roll things out for the district and helping us critique and develop the plan for the district. And lastly, the guidance documents that we used were from the Department of Health, New York State Ed, and also the CDC. So to give you a framework, the North Syracuse Early Education Program, the students that are going to that early education program are going five days a week. So our youngest of students will be going in starting at 8:15, and they will go for a half day and then be finished at 11:15. And then there'll be some cleaning within the building, and then the next group of students will come in from 12:15 to 2:45. In our plan, we are utilizing a 2-1-2 model for the hybrid, where one group will come in on Monday and Tuesday, approximately anywhere from maybe 12 to 14 students in a classroom, and then they will have some virtual learning on Wednesday, and then another group will come in on Thursday and Friday. If you look at the sample of a schedule, you can see where the stars are for Group 1. It shows Monday, Tuesday, and Group 2 shows Thursday, Friday. Now, it has their Group 3 with stars all the way across. The state education document has tasked us with making sure that we're meeting the needs of our most vulnerable students. And so our students that are in a 12-1-4 and 15-to-1-to-1 program will be coming in five days a week. At our middle school, those students will also be on a 2-1-2 for the hybrid. Basically, the same. Group 1 would come in on Monday and Tuesday, have virtual learning on Wednesday. Group 2 would be Thursday, Friday, also virtual learning on Wednesday. Group 3, which is again our 12-1-4 and our 15-to-1-to-1, will be coming in five days a week. Now, our junior high and our high school, those models are different than our elementary and middle. We are the largest suburb school district in the county, and Syracuse City is the largest. And 7 through 12, they are not bringing in their students at all. They're all virtual. So in looking at the state guidance documents, we were looking at numbers. So our students in our secondary, junior high, and high school will be coming in one day in person. The rest will be remote. So you have several groups. You have a Group 1 that will be coming in on Monday. Group 2 would be Tuesday, and then Wednesdays for all students are virtual. And you have Group 3 on Thursday and Group 4 on Friday. Like the other levels, Group 5 in this model is our students with disabilities. The 12-1-4, no, sorry, the 12-1, 15-to-1-1, because at the junior high, that's the one level. We do not have a 12-1-4 program. The high school is going to be the same as the junior high. The only difference is at the high school, we do have a 12-1-4 program as well as a 15-to-1-to-1 program, and they will be coming five days a week. So we've had many questions that have been asked throughout our time getting things together, and people are asking questions just about, how is it going to look? How many students will be in a class? What about walking in the halls? So we just passed the junior high and high school. If we're looking at about 20% of the students at any one given time at the high school, our numbers are about 1,900, a little more than 1,900 at the high school. Half of that would put you at about 925. So we're bringing in just below 500 a day at each level. So traffic patterns, when you see things where you're thinking about things being crowded, we did not want to do that for safety reasons. That's why we're bringing students in for just that one day, so that they can be safe as they move from point A to point B. So this is special education services, and again, I was explaining the different groups. So Group 3 at the elementary, and it shows the days that they're coming in, as well as the middle school, junior high, and high school, as far as the groups for special ed. One of the main things that we are focusing on is the social, emotional, and mental health support. What we've found and what we know from parent survey and just from the news and just our interactions, since this issue has come up with COVID-19, what is done with students' social, emotional, and mental health and for families has been very trying on many different levels. Speaking with Lisa Goldberg, our director, she has a plan in place between her and Val de Florio. Are working with different outside agencies and making sure we're quickly identifying students from before we closed and making sure we're reconnecting with them and also making sure we're identifying any new students that may have certain needs, whether individually or for the family. We're also offering professional development for our faculty and staff and how to just talk to students and support them, not to be counselors, but help them just recognize that there's a student that may be in crisis or may need to be handed off to the professional. Health and safety is one of our primary issues at this time. So just from looking at the news and documents, daily temperature screenings for students and staff, we as a district are making sure that we do that on site. The state document does allow for parents to do a temperature screening, which we will ask for periodic from the parents, but we will be doing temperature screenings for all the students on a daily basis. Students will be required to wear masks throughout the day. Masks will be provided to students and staff. If a student is sitting at his desk, they will be required to wear the mask. Even if they are socially six feet apart, they will be wearing their mask. Teachers, by the state ed document, can provide what they call mask breaks. And so at the younger level, there may be more frequent mask breaks than as you move up through. What does a mask break mean? It means that if you're sitting at your desk, you're six feet apart, you can take off or lower your mask. It does not mean you can get out of your chair and wander the classroom, because that will defeat the purpose of having a mask break. We have to have a plan to assess ill students and staff in isolation if needed. I think you saw on the news Peg Puma, one of our school nurses, met with Andrew Donovan and was just giving an example of each building will have to provide a place where it's isolated from everyone else. Instruction on identifying signs of illness, that goes in line with some of the training that we'll be doing. And at the beginning of the school year, normally, we have two superintendent conference days. Later in our board meeting, I'm going to be asking the board to change the school calendar, looking to move two of the additional superintendent's conference days from later in the year to the beginning of the school year to ensure that our staff have enough time with all the new procedures and training and information that has to be shared. So that will be front-loaded at the start of the school year. District is following CDC guidelines for cleaning and disinfecting and following those. Matt Irwin is here, and he's been on our subcommittees, making sure that we are following the guidance for all the cleaning and disinfection that needs to happen and our protocols for actions. When we have a confirmed case or suspected case of COVID-19 in the school, we were on a conference call with Ryan McMahon on Friday, and one of the things that he's talking to us about is making sure that we have all the protocols and information from the local health, the Department of Health, so that we can put that into our plan that has to be submitted this Friday from their guidance. And so one of the questions that we keep getting from parents, what happens if a child in a classroom or the teacher, if a teacher or someone tests positive in that classroom? Elementary, it's very, very easy, because we're keeping them contained. They're not leaving for lunch at the elementary level. They'll be eating in the classroom. They're not leaving for specials in that classroom. Except gym, they may be allowed to go outside, as long as they are 12 feet, social distancing. But everything is self-contained at the elementary. So if that were to happen, all of the students in that class would have to be quarantined along with the teacher as well. And again, the first thing that we would be doing is contacting the Department of Health. Oftentimes, they know before us and they contact us, and they walk us through contact tracing and what needs to happen as far as next steps. Food services. All the students that are currently enrolled in our school food authority have access to school meals each day. This will include students in attendance in school as well as students learning remotely. I know Don works with Wendy Swift. What we'll be doing is creating sites where food can be picked up for breakfast and lunches, just like we did when we shut down. Food services staff will also be trained on district policies and procedures for health and safety and making sure that we comply with New York State School Breakfast Program and National School Lunch Programs. Both of these programs are overseen by the Child Nutrition Program. Transportation. You've seen the videos. We've looked at the guidance over and over. What we'll be doing is there will be one child per seat, unless they're children from the same household, siblings. Trying to make sure that they are wearing their mask on the bus. You have to wear your mask. There is no ways around that. The entire bus, at least one time per day, will be cleaned and sanitized, so that we are making sure that we're disinfecting that bus at all times. Our timeline. We've continued to update a frequently asked questions document. Department of Health has approved our opening plan, but we have to add some things to it. Every school district was given a task on Friday by the governor, that there are three areas that we'll have to address. How will we provide equity to all students within our plan? What are we doing with our protocols for contact tracing? And what are we doing with our protocols for anyone who tests positive with COVID-19? And that is due by this Friday, and we received that last Friday. Remote learning plans and explanation of how these plans will address. So those are some of the questions. That's all due by the 14th. The parent confirmation of 100% remote learning model. We did have a due date of this Friday. We are extending that to the 19th next week. That'll allow us some time to have these parent meetings that we've set up, so that it gives them more information, so that they can make a solid choice. We're hoping to meet the deadlines of August 24th for student placements at K4 and August 27th at 5 through 12. And the other thing that came out of this past Friday was the governor said that all school districts, except for the Big Five, would have to have three parent information sessions. And we're looking to start that this Thursday, August 13th, 6 to 7. Monday, August 17th, 6 to 7. Tuesday, August 18th, 6 to 7. If you're in Syracuse City or Albany or Rochester, they have to hold five meetings by August 21st. We also have to hold a teacher forum that will also be held via Zoom, and that is scheduled for this next Thursday, August 20th, from 3 to 4 p.m. So that concludes that part of the information. We, I have received questions from parents. They're coming fast and furious. Mr. Leahy's been just frantically typing and answering questions, but I did want to take just a few seconds to just answer a few of these questions that parents have raised. One of the things that they ask is about just lunchroom. At our elementary level, students will be eating lunch in the classroom. 7 through 12, because they move and there's a reduced number, they will be eating lunch in the cafeteria, but again, very well spaced apart. Other questions that have come up is, and I've answered this one about if someone tests positive in a classroom, they would quarantine the teacher and the students within that class. One of the other questions that continues to come up is the mask break. And again, students have to wear their mask at school. That is something that we're requiring. We want to make sure we're keeping people safe. The teacher determines when they will take a mask break. And I'd say that one of the last questions was, it was about the Regents. We'll be having Regents exams. That's yet to be determined. The Board of Regents is meeting again on October 1st, and we'll know more once we hear from Albany. Thank you.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Bowles? I think we can. We'll let Mr. Bowles get back to his... And as soon as he sits down, I'll start with you.
Dan, you mentioned if a student tests positive or someone tests positive, they would quarantine that teacher and that entire classroom. So does that mean that they would have to stay home for the 14 days?
That is correct. The students and the teacher would be staying home, and then they would be doing remote learning, probably with that teacher at the same time. And if the teacher, if the teacher had tested positive and that teacher is ill, we would not require them. We would get someone to fill in for that teacher and let them recover. But if the teacher and the children would be quarantined.
And then I was thinking about the students on the bus, and they have to wear the mask, but how, you know, the bus driver has to focus on driving the bus. Well, are we thinking of putting any additional adults on the buses to make sure kids are keeping their masks on?
We haven't thought about that piece, because again, normally, we have buses that have 45 to 50 students on them. On the low end, we might have 22. If we do have several siblings, you could get as high as maybe 28 to 30 if there are multiple siblings. But the bus, being alone in the seat, should be a lot different of a bus ride than what we normally have.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I have a question. So looking at the elementary schedule, if Group 1 is in on Monday and Tuesday, what is Group 2 doing? Do they have the same teacher that's teaching the lessons in person on Monday and Tuesday?
The Group 2 does have the same teacher, so they, what we're asking teachers on that Wednesday to plan long-term, because Wednesday, they can touch base with Group 1, say for whether ELA or math, and then later touch base with Group 2 via Zoom. But we're providing an ample amount of time, especially in that afternoon, to touch base with colleagues and plan for things for students to do the rest of the week.
So it'll be, it's a planning day for the virtual days for the following week?
Correct.
What is the planning day? Wednesday?
Wednesday.
So that was, and I apologize for this, because you sent out Q and A for the board, and the board sent in Q and A, and I read the Q and A and came up with more Qs. Just a couple clarifications on that piece, and that was... Where, is the instructional staff is in the building Wednesday?
The instructional staff is in the building on Wednesday, yes.
Are they every day? They are every day, correct?
Yes.
So maybe Mr. Irwin has to respond to this, I don't know. But the deep cleaning that occurs Wednesday, how does that work around staff present? I know I read where you're doing high-traffic areas and...
We'll have Mr....
And I didn't mean to put him on the spot. I just didn't know where else to ask.
I asked him to be here just...
It popped up in my head today when I was reading that again.
Just for that fact.
Yeah.
So deep cleaning is going to occur nightly in all the buildings, okay? So Wednesday, Wednesday's gonna be no different than an instructional day. We'll have additional bodies where necessary to hit high-touch areas, restrooms, et cetera, during the day, so that we have a greater frequency of cleaning and disinfection during the day. But all that deep cleaning and disinfection will still occur nightly.
Should I go off of that? The buildings are still open on our normal schedule, like a normal school year?
Yes, with the exception of evenings.
My only other question, and it's not you, Mr. Irwin, is there was a question about recording of video lessons, and you were going to be looking into technology for that? I didn't know what they, when they say recording of video lessons, and again, this is my, a lot of opinion-based, based on what I used to do, it sounded like somebody was suggesting on the days you had Group A, B, or C, or D, you're recording that lesson and broadcasting that. And I don't know, in my mind, that there's value in that piece, because to me, that's... We used to do that with distance learning, where you actually filmed a class being taught, and it went to different school districts, and it was, it didn't last long when technology improved. But I didn't know where you were on that. That kind of raised a question in my mind.
Well, I knew the instructional committee, and I know Greg is here, who's been facilitating the instructional committee. I don't know if you want to speak to that, Greg?
And it's fine. It's a work in progress. I just wondered what you were, because it looked like you were investigating something, and I didn't know exactly what.
So I can just share that the reentry committee that I'm co-facilitating, which is the instructional operations one, that is one of the things we've explored. That's still a work in progress at this point. The sticking point is for everyone, is how do we meet the needs of every student? So especially if you're teaching at the high school or the junior high, and you've got them once a week in person, how do we keep the content moving forward if we're only seeing them face-to-face once, and the rest is an asynchronous learning? So as of right now, there's no decision on that. That's something that's being worked on. That was discussed at the committee, but certainly, we're not finished with that work. But I can say right now, it's looking more like it would be the face-to-face, and then we would have online learning, some form of online learning for all those levels every single day, whether that's an asynchronous or asynchronous. But we have not finalized everything yet at all.
Okay, thank you. And I know this is very difficult, and I'm sure it's gonna be evolutionary as we...
Exactly, yes.
Hopefully move forward. Thank you.
Can I say a couple more things? I know this is a crisis situation, and it is evolving. But I did want to say with the reopening plan, I was very happy to see the acronym LEGEND, that I think it's gonna be very, very helpful for parents. And also the SMART links, that was, I thought, great, too.
There's been a lot of people that put a lot of time into this, and I can tell you, the work is still moving forward. But we as a district have been complimented by the media at our plan and how well it is and what it looks like as far as being presented. So we've had two people at the local media tell us that they've seen a lot of plans, and they really liked the presentation. It was easy to follow.
Question for you as well. If we have a sibling or a parent that tests positive, that not at a particular school, one sibling at the middle school, another sibling at the high school, are we waiting for a positive test for that sibling?
What we'll be doing is we'll be taking our guidance from the Department of Health. They'll let us know, because once there's someone that's positive, they start their contact tracing, and they'll let us know what the next steps are. And Ryan McMahon confirmed that on Friday, that they'll be involved.
I just got one here. Just texted me. Question, if a student or student tests positive, what about all the teachers that the other students had contacted with? Example, an AAS student is traveling back... Example, an AIS student is traveling back and forth to AIS teacher, have contact with all teams? So if a teacher teaches fifth, sixth, and seventh grade, and a seventh grader gets sick, would those people who came in contact also be quarantined?
What they'll do is, if you've had contact with someone for 15 minutes or more, is what the guidance, we've been talked to about, we'll start to backtrack. Where did Person A go? Where have they been? And if they've been other locations with someone for extended period of time, they would let us know that that person would need to be quarantined. But we're going to be getting our information to put into the guidance document this Friday from the Department of Health, and they're going to just walk us through what their expectations are.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no more questions, we'll move on to Board of Education Committee reports, and I will start with Mrs. Scanlon. You have a lot of policies for us today.
We do. So, I know it's summer, but we had a need for the policy committee to get together, and we did that last Tuesday, and I want to say we had 100% of our committees show up. So that was fantastic. We have seven policies that we reviewed, and they're on our agenda tonight. Three are readopt without change, three are amend and readopt, and one is the second reading and formal adoption of a new policy.
Thank you. Would you like to make some comments, Mr. Crabtree, with regards to legislation? I know we got a, well, we have, we had an email recently.
We have not had a meeting. I have no comment what's happening with our legislator or nationally. I'd rather not give a comment.
Thank you. No, it's, I appreciate that, because I share your frustration. Board of Education, oh, I'm sorry, Superintendent comments?
Just want to comment that, again, the work that's been happening with all the reopening is just, there's a lot going on. Things are changing constantly. When we get new guidance, we are moving as quickly as we can to adhere to that guidance, and we're trying to answer parents' email and their questions. So, again, for the parents, we will have an information session this Thursday from 6 to 7, next Monday, 6 to 7, and next Tuesday, from 6 to 7. We're trying to make sure that we're answering as many questions. A lot of the questions are similar, so we'll be continuing to send out communication on that as we move forward.
Okay, thank you. Any other Board of Education comments for the good of the order? Okay, we'll move into routine action items, and if I could get a motion for A, which is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Education on July 20th, 2020. Motion from Mrs. Scanlon, second from Ms. McDonald. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Item B, a motion, please, for the consideration of classification and placement of disabled students by the District Committee and Speciality. Motion from Ms. Kruger, second from Matt Herman. Mr. Herman, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, carried. Item C, classification and placement of preschool disabled students by the committee. Motion for that. Motion from Ms. Kruger, second by Mr. Harrington. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, that motion is also carried. Discussion action items, we have the calendar amendment for 2021. Could I get a motion to place that before us? Motion from Mr. Marizio, second from Mrs. Scanlon. Any discussion on the calendar amendment? Okay, all in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Item B, a motion to place that before us, please, adoption of New York State Archives and Records Administration. Motion from Ms. McDonald, second from Ms. Kruger. Any discussion? I do have a question. Could you just tell me about, is that just a policy we have to follow? Oh. Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Item C, addendum to the contract for the roofing projects. Bell and Spence. A motion to put that before us. Motion from Mrs. Scanlon, second from Ms. Kruger. And again, what I read on that was it was staying within the bid that we had before. It's just some additional work was found, so there is no additional cost. So does anybody have a question? We had that explained, I think. Is it in the Friday letter? Okay. I know I read it somewhere. Okay, so you can put your mask on, you're good. Thank you. All in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Item D, acknowledgement of gifts. Could I get a motion to place that before us? Motion from Ms. Kruger, second from Mr. Herman. I just want to point out, these are phenomenal gifts, so I wanted to do this alone, this one. It's just a significant amount of money from the New York, such a New York committee foundation. There was a grant that was applied for, and from Friends of North Circus Early Education Program. If anybody here has read about the, it's the, how do they word it? It's called the Inclusive Playground. When I read the grant, I, and I'm embarrassed to admit, I didn't even know that existed, but when I started reading about the details, it was just, it's phenomenal. So I think this is fantastic, and a significant amount of money. So I just wanted to make a point to say that, and we'll have thank you notes go out as we always do. Any other questions there? Yes, sir.
And a comment, since Matt is here. When do we feel this will be done, completed?
Construction's today.
Awesome.
So, I would say it's in the next month.
I also want to thank your department for this, because years ago, our maintenance people did not get involved in any of the playgrounds. I really appreciate this, and I know Main Street staff does, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crabtree. Any other comments? Okay, all in favor? Opposed, that is carried. And item E, recommendation to abolish the 20-hour-per-week teacher aide position and create the one full-time equivalent, School Secretary One at the administrative office. Motion by Ms. McDonald, second by Ms. Kruger. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Motion for item F, surplus of marketable goods. Motion from, anybody? Mrs. Scanlon, second from Ms. McDonald? And everybody will be happy, these are all marketable goods this time? A bunch of monitors? Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, that is carried. And with permission of the board, if I could get a motion, I would like to take policies G, H, I, J, and K together. Forget a motion from Ms. McDonald, second from Ms. Kruger. Any discussion on those? I just had one quick question, I think I answered it myself when I read it. I'm assuming the immunization policy with the chart attached? I'm assuming just, if there's any change from the Department of Health, they just change it in the chart, and we just readopt with the chart? Okay. And that may happen in the future, okay? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Instructional personnel report A, a motion, please. Motion from Ms. Kruger, second from Mrs. Scanlon. Discussion. Yes, sir, Mr. Crabtree.
It's always sad when you see someone retire from our school district, and Bettina Siano, which I know Mr. Bowles knows, because she worked with him as a teacher when he was an elementary principal, and she has been a great asset. When I was down there volunteering to read with students, just a very, very active and great teacher. So, it's sad that we say goodbye to her. But we won't say goodbye to her until the end of December, so.
Thank you. Anything else? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, instructional personnel report A is carried. Motion for Personnel Report B, please. Motion from Mr. Thorne, second from Mr. Marizio. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, that is carried. And Administrative Personnel C, motion from Mr. Harrington, second...
I just want to...
Sorry, yes.
Personnel C.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, yeah, I'm looking, I'm opening that up, again. All right, no, that's, that's fine. Thank you for catching that. So we have that motion from Mr. Harrington, second from Ms. McDonald. This is before us, with the amendment as mentioned. Any questions or discussion? Yes, sir, Mr. Crabtree.
Couple of comments. Personally, I want to thank the administrative team for adding into the budget the administrative assistant for students, because it's definitely going to be needed at the high school, especially with COVID. And I feel that you have chosen an outstanding lady that will do a great job with those kids. And again, sadness that we're losing the executive principal from CNS. I think all of us here have had some kind of meetings with him, and seen him at games, and being up to the high school like I am when I volunteer, always supportive of our staff, our students, and the entire school district. We are losing probably one of the greatest administrators that this school district has. So, I just want to say a few words, because he's done a great job at CNS.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Scanlon.
Yeah, I agree. I also wanted to say something about Bill Leclerc as well. It's a huge loss for our district. We appreciate all the good work he did. What I appreciated most about him is, he listened. He listened to our board comments when they did their building presentations, and then the next year, the things we addressed the year before, he included in his presentation. So, he got it done. He listened and he got it done. He was a change agent for our district. We saw changes for the betterment of all students under his leadership. We wish him well in his new position, and he will be missed.
One of the things about Mr. Leclerc, if you've ever been up at the high school, it didn't matter who you were when you walked by him, and he made it a point to know your name, know more about you, whether you were in the chorus or a star athlete, it did not matter. He made sure that every single student at that building felt welcome. So, yes, he will be definitely missed.
Okay, and, yes, thank, so thank you, Mr. Leclerc, if you're out there. When I heard you were going to Florida, I thought maybe you were going to be the Commissioner of Education, because I think from your work here in New York, you have that qualification. So, best of luck what you do and where you go, for you and your family. And seeing no other comments, all in favor? Administrative Personnel Report C, opposed, that is carried. At this time, I'd like to make a motion for executive session for the purpose of reviewing the employment of one individual, employment record, with no action to follow. A motion from Mr. Thorne, second from Mrs. Scanlon. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, that is carried. And if I could get a motion to adjourn the meeting. Motion from Ms. Kruger, second from Ms. McDonald. Any discussion? I think so. All in favor? Opposed, abstentions? That is carried. Thank you. Meeting's adjourned.
We're going to stay here.